Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education. With that, I would like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda with one addition. Adrienne sent an updated human resource report and it should be at your place. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Jenny Leeper, seconded by...
Me, Suzie.
Suzie Hines. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved, moving on to public comment.
We did not have any requests.
All right, Secretary's financial report.
Well, good evening. We'll run the financial report for the month of July of 2018. Maybe, there we go. Okay. Again, this is the beginning of a new fiscal year, so the... We start, sort of start all over and you can see in the general fund revenue for the month of just a little over $250,000 with 4.26 million in expenditures. We did have, we do have one little unique situation that happened. We had our audit performed last week and the auditors caught a transfer that should've been made in June out, and so that's being recorded. You'll see that here in July. So that's, that's pretty unique. We wouldn't normally have had that, but there was a small transfer that should've taken place in June that we didn't catch. So you'll see that amount in there, so we have an ending fund balance of just a little over $7 million in the general fund. In the management fund, you can see the revenue and expenditures for the month. Of course, the $583,000 is for our property liability auto and workers' compensation premium for this new school year, so we have an ending balance of just over $491,000 in the management fund. Capital projects fund, revenue and expenditures for the month, as you can see, three projects are starting to really kick into high gear as they have been all summer. We have about $6.82 million left. We anticipate that we will have exhausted those funds in approximately three to four more months, which is pretty much right on schedule. In the statewide one cent local option sales tax, you can see revenue for the month of $25,500. Again, that, that is all interest with one small reimbursement that we had coming for some work from another agency on a grant. The expenditures, the $22,000 is for work on the new high school site and planning for the new high school building. And then, of course, the transfer out is for the debt obligations that come out of the statewide one cent sales tax fund. So you can see our ending balance of 8.87 million. And I would remind the board that actually 7.8 of that is available for use and all but slightly less than 2 million of that is dedicated for the three elementary projects. In the physical plant and equipment levy, you can see the revenue and expenditures for the month, $522,000. That includes moving a portable and some other things that we've been doing all summer. And we have an ending balance of 3.66 million, very similar to where we were one year ago. Debt service, you can see revenue for the month as well as there's that transfer in for Fund 33. No expenditures, we won't have any until December when our first debt service payment is due, so our ending balance is $229,722. Student activity, again, pretty normal for the month of July with summer programs going on, not a lot for revenue and obviously a little bit more for expenditures. Ending balance of $521,000. Trust and agency account, there you can see the $844 transfer in that came out of the general fund and you can see the revenue and expenditures within ending balance of Food service account, almost no revenue, a little bit of rebate money that came in, some final cleanup on that. Expenditures for getting ready for the new school year as well as we do have a couple of staff members that are on 12-month contracts, so that's why you see that amount. You can see our ending balance of just $826,600 approximately. Student coffee shop, obviously no activity in the month of July. And the River Hills Consortium, as the fourth quarter final tuition bills for the 17, '18 school year are rolling in, you can see we collected $1.437 million, but that will all be out, go out to this, at this board meeting tonight. And so that'll zero back out again at the end of the month. And with that, I'd entertain any questions the board might have.
Any questions for Doug?
So our general fund is a little bit above where we were at this point last year. Is that just a...
Cash-wise, yes.
Cash-wise, is that just a timing issue or the...
That is because the board graciously allowed us to increase the cash reserve levy so we could start to make up for some of the authority that we've been granted, but we didn't receive the cash for. And also, we increased the amount of that levy for cash flow purposes. If you'll recall, last year in August, we were very, very close to having to borrow. And so one of the things that we did was bump that up so that we wouldn't be in that position because it does cost the district quite a bit of money to borrow money. You don't go to the bank like you would as regular citizens to borrow money. We have to actually issue bonds and we have to go through the legal process of attorneys and all of that in order to go through that process to issue a bond even if it's for a short-term cash flow.
So we knew our cash balances would go down. We just wanted to make sure that we, through the cash reserve process, started building those back up slowly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Doug? Hearing none, then the secretary's financial report will be placed on file for audit. Moving on now to communications, Janelle Darce.
Yes, hello. Yes, we're gonna cover a lot of things coming up here for the school year. Quite a few reminders and notices about different events. Tomorrow night's gonna be our fall sports kickoff up at Hauser Stadium, so just for on the board and everyone that might be watching, it's dinner at 6:00. You can get for $6:00. And the program at 7:00 and the coaches will introduce all the teams. The marching band, dance team, and cheerleaders will all perform, so a great night to come out and support the Tigers. And also, just a quick reminder for any businesses and families out there, you can join the Tiger Booster Club, can contact the high school office, or you can join online through Ticket Tracker. And there's some great information right there about the different memberships, either business memberships or just the regular ones, and then the benefits that you get for joining at those different levels. Also, lots of information you can find out online through the district website. You can get that through the high school site and then athletics. Really exciting, next week we'll start our backpack nights for seven elementary buildings. So as you can see there, we have, each building has a different night for about an hour and a half or two hours where parents and kids come, the backpacks full of all their supplies, get to meet their teachers. And for all of those questions out there, teacher assignments will be emailed Friday afternoon, this Friday afternoon, that's Friday, August 17th. In the afternoon, you will get an email of who your teachers will be, so parents, watch your email inboxes for that. And if you have multiple children in elementary, you will get separate emails for each child in that teacher assignment. It's a very hot topic of conversation right now, so if you could all help spread the word about that, you'll be getting emails Friday. And those are all the dates for the backpack nights. We also have back-to-school nights at our junior highs and then also at the high school. Junior highs next Tuesday night and then at the high school next Wednesday, and that's for all new students and then also the incoming 10th grade students. And, that is really big. Our first day of school. It's Thursday, August 23rd. Mark your calendars. It's about that big on my calendar. Couple thank you's we want to give. The Rotary Club of Cedar Falls presented a check for $5,000 to the district for the Connect CF project, so a big thanks to the Rotary Club. The Connect CF project is working with CFU where we're connecting students, free and reduced lunch, connecting them with low-cost internet services. So thank you to the Rotary Club of Cedar Falls and Board of Director Haseman for making that presentation. We also want to thank the Cedar Falls Lions Club for donating $1,000 towards the Connect CF project as well. We definitely appreciate that support. Just, you know, our, as summer is kind of winding down, I'd be surprised at how much is really winding up in some of the buildings, but our Tiger marching band has been practicing and they actually performed and marched in the first parade of the year for them, which was a state fair parade this last week. So it's 172-member band, which is really impressive. So that's a great shot of the Capitol behind them and them marching in the parade. And we also already had part of our new teacher orientation for 34 new teachers in the district. And then that'll be followed up at the end of this week and then with the new teacher breakfast on Friday morning with the Chamber and Alliance. So a big welcome to all of those teachers. And of course, our athletic team has started fall practices. Just wanted to quick mention, our first home volleyball game is Tuesday, August 21st, 5:30. And the first home football game is Friday, August 31. 5:00 PM sophomore game, 7:15 varsity. Of course, those are at the Dome and volleyball is up at the high school. So we'd encourage everyone to come out to see those games. And then a big, quick mention for our Golden Age Pass. So if you are age 62 or above and a resident of the school district, you get a free lifetime pass to all of our home athletic activities. Does that include playoffs or the state-sponsored activities? But you can just get that by going to the high school main office, which is on Division Street, or just giving the phone number there a call. So we really want to get the word out about that so people can come in and support the Tigers. Speaking of the Tigers, the men's golf has had an impressive start to their season. They were first as a team in the division and first overall at the Golf Super Meet last week, so congratulations to the high school men's golf team. And we did want to do a quick little kind of look back to the summer, although many of our teachers have had the summer off, some of them have continued their own learning. And two right here, Julie Cavalier, business in math at the high school, and Rob Welter, life science teacher at Holmes, both participated in the Iowa STEM Teacher externship program this past summer. Julie was at Dorfer and Rob was at, with the Iowa DNR, George West State Park. Great opportunity for them to learn kind of, so the things that are happening with businesses and different things in the community and then they can take those back into their classrooms. And this is through the Iowa STEM program and facilitated through the Northeast Iowa STEM Hub, which is at UNI. And also, really impressive thing, Maria Hockstra, Holmes Junior High Science teacher. This past spring, she was selected to represent Iowa at a summer institute in the Grand Tetons, which was sponsored by National Geographic and in partnership with the Geographic Alliance Network. And she earned a GeoInquiry certification. You can see, it was a great tweet that they did right there of her participating in that institute this past summer. So great learning happening by our teachers even over the summer. Once again, make sure you can keep up on everything happening in the district. There's all of the district's social media channels and then also all of our buildings. And once again, our Aldrich Elementary has a new Facebook page, so make sure to go in and like that for any updates. Any questions?
Any questions for Janelle?
Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Moving on now to item F, the resolution to accept donation. Mr. Nusker.
I'm gonna pass it off to Dr. Patey. This is a pretty big deal.
This is a really big deal, really a neat deal. We have just a very brief PowerPoint as well that we can pull up and hopefully share. This is certainly a really neat recommendation that we're providing to our school board this evening and certainly with, with great gratitude and appreciation that we bring this from an anonymous donor in our community that has purchased a piece of property that they'd like to donate to the district right around Cedar Heights Elementary. And you can see that this is to the southeast of Cedar Heights. It's a, it's a section of property that helps to square out and square off the property that will eventually turn into green space and some more park areas around this, this elementary. You know, when you, we talk about the scope and the size of a donation like this, you just can't share how much this means and what this is going to do for our kids, what this means for that building, what this means for that neighborhood. And it's certainly going to be a benefit that's going to last generations and it's really, really a neat donation. Monetary value, we're not sure exactly what the property was purchased for, but it was listed at right around $190,000. And certainly those dollars and now in the property is donated to the district. The donors understand that our intent is to attempt to sell the home that sits on that property, to have somebody potentially lift and move that off, but long-term to turn that into, again, green space area for students to participate with activities and recess activities and certainly add much-needed space to that site. There is a resolution, as you can see, and it just talks about the legal requirements and description of the property. This gift would be transferable to the district. As you can see, item number one down at the bottom talks about that this is something that we recommend, that we gratefully accept from this, this donor. And the cost to the district simply is to pay the legal fees incurred by the, by this transfer of property to the district. Very, very generous gift, very excited about this gift, certainly something that is really shows and highlights the commitment that our community has and certainly this, this family has for our school system.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I move that the Board of Education for the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the resolution accepting the gift of real estate to the school district as presented.
Thank you, Sasha. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments?
Just a question, just on, more on structure. I mean, this is tremendously generous. I mean, fantastic that our community would do this. Do they, can, can, do we offer this? Does this end up being tax-deductible for anyone who would donate to the school district?
Yeah, so they, they work through their attorney and the school attorney to be able to come up with the resolution as well as the tax-deferment plan. So yes, we are a nonprofit entity, so that is a tax-deferred gift, which is certainly a benefit and again, just, it's a, so it's a win-win. We just can't thank them enough.
No, it's, it's a tremendous generosity. It's, I was hoping you'd say that, that's at least a little bit that the, that the donor gets back as far as, as it being counted as a gift against their taxes, so.
Exactly. There's a few different processes they had to go through to set that up, but again, it was set up properly and certainly that benefit will, will come back to them.
Great, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on now to the property and casualty insurance report. Mr. Nusker.
Thank you. And every year we kind of, we go through our insurance report. I know it's probably one of the highlights of the month of August, but it is something that we need to brief you on so that you're aware of, of where we stand with the coverage for insurance in the event that we would actually need to use it. If we go to the next slide, there we go. As you can tell, we're a part of the Iowa Association of School Board Safety Group. There's a little over 300 school districts in Iowa as well as AEAs that are in that group. This year, the value of our facilities is a little over $192 million. And you can see the premium is just a little over $198,000. We have a $5,000 property deductible. There you can tell the history of the last few years of the property value, obviously with Aldrich Elementary coming online this year, as well as the new high school site that's insured now as well. And you can see, the red represents the actual cost of the insured value of the buildings and then the brown is the contents, the equipment and materials in that inside the building. Yes, Mr. Haseman?
Is this book value or market value?
This would be the value that is determined by our insurance adjusters.
So hopefully it's market value, so if a tornado comes ripping through, we can replace that building.
Well, typically what they will do is, when the insurance company comes around and values our property, they will subtract out the value of the parking lots, they will subtract out the value of the footings and the stem walls for the building. Because the idea would be as if it was in a fire or if it was flattened by a tornado, you would rebuild the exact same building on the same site. But you have to remember that we have an umbrella plan so that if we have a tornado or fire at one of our sites, we have the full $192 million umbrella. So if it, if the building as an example is insured for 50 million and it costs 60 to replace it, we're covered.
Good.
The only way we would not be covered is if we had a calamity, but then I think the whole town would have a bit of a calamity problem if that were to occur.
Yep.
So we can go on to the next side of our property insurance. The other part of property insurance for us is builder's risk. That is for North Cedar and Orchard Hill this year. That's approximately 14 million. No, I'll take that back, 17 million for the two of those. Again, it's not everything, but it's the idea of the stem walls, you don't insure that, the parking lots, that sort of thing. Same $5,000 deductible and then we also have another one and a half million dollars worth of flood insurance coverage out of North Cedar in the event that, that were, that were ever to happen. Auto insurance, you can see, we, our fleet now is just about one point, excuse me, $4.17 million in value. That's all our school buses and all of our support vehicles, what the custodial staff would use, ground staff would use, as well as the vans and cars that the staff used when they go on trips. You can see our deductibles, you might say that's an extremely low deductible and it is, but the pricing difference between, on a collision to go to $1,000 deductible versus a $2.50 is if I have five events, I've paid for the premium difference. And we typically have more than five in a year. So that, when you're talking about the number of vehicles we have, that, that's not unusual. And again, just a reminder, on the school buses, if, we have guaranteed replacement cost if the bus is too old or newer. And with buses running anywhere from 90 to $100,000 apiece, that makes a big difference real quick if we were to have an issue down Central Services. Liability insurance, again, not really a whole lot of change from last year, except that the group excess now is gone. We have 15 million per occurrence, 30 million aggregate. Under the old arrangement was it was a 15 million limit for the group and that's all 300-plus school districts in the AEAs and the safety pool. But they now will allow an aggregate up to 30 million, so we basically picked up twice the amount of coverage should we ever need it. And again, that includes medical pollution and violent response events, if that were ever to have that. We also have to have underground storage tank insurance for our fuel barrels out at Central Services and that's through petroleum marketers out of Des Moines. And you can see the coverage for that. That doubled actually for this year. That historically had been a half a million, that's now a million. Crime, no real changes with any of that. From the safety group, we do have the electronic data protection, data compromise coverage. It is the 21st century now and the one advantage of that is we now, the deductible last year was 15,000, this year it was cut in half to 7,500 and the premium basically stayed the same. So we pick up a little bit more on that should we ever need it. Workers' compensation, you can see our premium is a little over $211,000, which is a modification factor of .75. 1.0 is considered average. This sort of shows you a graph of where the district has been. We've been ticking up a little bit over the last few years. We work very, very hard at, at keeping that low. At one time, we were down, as you can see, at about 6.8. And the safety group average is a .96, so we still feel that we're in a very advantageous position.
And being below average is a really good thing with that.
Well, and that's what this is going to show. The red bar would indicate if we had a 1.0 mod factor, what our premium would be and the brown bar indicates what the district's actual premium amount is. Now that brown bar doesn't take any consideration, any discounts that we get because that we've negotiated them with our insurance carrier. And we also get some rating discounts because of our consistently being able to, to run under average. One of the reasons, just to point out, with the, with the changes in Iowa with work comp rules that went into effect July 1 of 2017, you can see the red bar is starting to taper down. So we're losing a little bit of the discounts and savings that we've been able to leverage with our continued modification factor running in the high sixes, low sevens that it had been. But we're still receiving quite a bit of savings over what we would be without. And in summary, our district facilities' value has increased approximately 31% over the last five years. Adding Aldrich Elementary and the new high school site obviously boosted that. Our work comp mod factor continues to be was the lowest in the state. And I'll remind the board that all the premiums are paid out of the managing fund with the exception of builder's risk, which is included in the budgets for the construction projects. And I think that's it.
Any questions for Doug? Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Great report. Moving on to now to item H, approval of the substantial completion of the Robinson Dresser baseball field lighting.
I think this is my last one for the night. There we go, if you want to bring that up. The board will recall last, about a year ago, you, we, that you approved a contract to replace the lights at the baseball field at Robinson Dresser. And you can see the original contract amount from K&amp;W Electric here in Cedar Falls. We threw in a little bit of contingency money and then there's professional design from the engineers. Contract came in just slightly under. We had one change order, which was a negative for, we deducted some outlets and some things like that. And the engineer's estimate for weather fees was right on target and so we actually came in $4,382, I believe that's, I believe is what that says, under budget. And with that, I would recommend acceptance of the project.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion to approve the Robinson Dresser lighting?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education accept as complete the Robinson Dresser baseball field lighting improvements. All claims for materials furnished, labor performed, and/or services provided on this contract must be filed within the next 30 days.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded by Sasha. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Now, item I on the agenda, the approval of the 2018-2019 board calendar.
Yes, within the package, you'll see the handout with some informational reports added to it that from last meeting, we shared this underneath the superintendent updates. Just a couple of different items. Again, our board meetings will be on the second and fourth Monday of each month. We still tentatively have August 27th as if necessary. You'll see in red those different informational reports. There are a couple of dates that are left open. It always seems throughout the year, there's items that board members may bring up that it'd be nice to have a report or learn a little bit more about X or Y. So we've left some flexibility in this board calendar. A couple of different informational report examples. Your hope is after the election, we can have some of our legislators in. We really want to talk about ESSA and some of the new Iowa assessments as that continues to come out and be created by the Department of Education and the Iowa Testing Services. You'll see we have in here on November 26, the Iowa Association of School Boards follow-up as we do annually to talk about the convention, some things that were, that we learned or gleaned from that convention. In December, we're really excited about having an update on our computer science program. We're really excited about the implementation K through 12 of computer science and how that's being implemented across our district. And then you'll see on the second page, it lists what our board admin council retreats are, not only the one in January, but the one that will be in June. And we pushed the June one back knowing that this year we had to change our schedule due to the additional inclement weather days that we had. We have science and K-12 science update included as an information reports, as well as caps towards the end of the year. So trying to provide a lot of background and information, but certainly wanted to have this before the board so you can see kind of what the tentative plan is upcoming.
Good. Any questions regarding the school calendar? Just for everybody's information, that January 9th date is our board admin retreat. It will be probably that morning, so if you can save that date on your calendar, that would be great. Do I have a motion to approve the board calendar?
So moved.
It's been moved by Jeff Haseman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Suzie Hines. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on now to the discussion of the 2018-2019 legislative priorities. And I know we began that discussion last board meeting.
So, I guess there's a couple of different items that I just wanted to note. Last year, we selected two priorities. IASB asked that you select no more than four. Last year, we had number 27, which is the extension of the one cent sales tax, the save extension. And then we had number 28, the bond issues with a simple majority vote. And then we had number 28, the bond issues, with a simple majority vote. I know, as a school board, we really had a lot of discussion throughout the year, really about number 29, and I think we had that discussion even last board meeting, in that talks about that public dollars should go to fund public schools. That talks about the ability of local districts to expand, maybe schools of innovation or magnet schools, but that vouchers utilizing taxpayer funds would not go towards nonprofit or for-profit entities. So, really, this is a discussion of board members, what you think should be the priorities and what should be the focus we have as we go into the convention.
All right. What have your thoughts been this past, I don't know, three weeks?
I continue to support the SAVE extension. It has to be, to me, the top, the top one that we continue to highlight and request our legislators to support.
And related to that, the bond issues should be important to keep in there, I think, number 28. And we had talked last time about maybe suggesting that the tax dollars going toward public schools should be pulled out and made its own item. And so, I don't know if that would be worthy of suggestion, just to show its importance as a standalone piece.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
I mean, I would agree with those. And then, I mean, I'm always in favor of keeping our list brief to really show where we consider our importance to be, so I would be in favor of those.
Me, I would be too.
And I believe we were one of the first districts that actually put the 1-cent sales tax extension on, and it wasn't listed as one of their priorities. So, we crafted some language, and now it's on their platform. So, I think it's very wise, if we choose, and I would almost pull out the language that's within number 29, that just says, as a school board, we oppose the use of additional taxpayer funds for the creation of vouchers or educational savings accounts, or an increase in tax credits or deductions directed towards non-public schools.
I would agree with him.
We've had that discussion, you know, at the board table for quite a while, when that has come out. So, I think that's very, very appropriate.
The other one we had talked about was the supplemental state aid. Is that one that we want to keep in there? Then it's no longer brief, then it's four.
You know, in that one, I struggle with a little bit, because we, when we go, and at times, we know that, you know, the percentage is thrown around, and this is now going back historically, where all of a sudden, the advocacy might say, well, we need to have 6%. And even though we know there might be a 1% growth in the economy going back several years. So, you know, I think people understand the importance of supplemental state aid, and at times, I think we can almost get so far off kilter, off-center when we're talking that way. And again, being involved with some of the delegate assemblies in the past, sometimes that's the one fixation. So, I think trying to help people move off just the supplemental state is important when you look at some of the other priorities that we might have as a district.
I agree. And I would suggest that, I would imagine that there are other districts that are going to put that one forward. And so, I think that we don't necessarily need to as a district.
It's kind of the implied you. It's one of those things that I think every district knows is important, and every legislator knows it's important. It's one of those aspects, I think it's left on there because it's such an important dialogue around school finance, but I think it's really implied.
I mean, my experience, I guess, from just watching it happen, it's pretty much decided. I don't know that us lobbying, or our lobbyists lobbying for it, have much of an impact. It seems like, you know, the parties pretty much know what they're going to settle on, and there's a lot of discussion and hand wringing, but it seems like a lot of times it's already a known quantity. So, I just don't know if it's important to put lobbying effort behind that, when I do think some of these other things we could move forward and hopefully get off the docket and into reality, so.
I'd say one benefit of the lobbying might just be public awareness. You know, even if it doesn't move the legislators, at least it gets that conversation out there where people are hearing it and seeing that this is something that's important for public schools. So, that has value in and of itself.
That's a really good point, because again, it's confusing when you talk about supplemental state aid and what that actually means. And to be able to talk about that is kind of the sole funding process for school districts, and the importance of that sometimes gets lost in that conversation. Very good point.
So, are we in agreement in moving those three forward? Okay. Good. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. We'll get those submitted, and here, in about a month, we will select a delegate assembly representative from our school district that will be down there for the delegate assembly at the annual convention and kind of represent and lobby for those resolutions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Moving on now to item K on the agenda, the Board of Education Goals.
And this is really where we ask if there's volunteers to serve on a committee for education, the Board of Education Goals, to be able to help craft and draft some goals that can be brought back to the full board. This will be the same for L, Superintendent Goals, and really just trying to see if there's anybody that would volunteer to meet over the next couple of weeks and look at what this may state and what those goals would look like comparatively as we look at our district goals, our building goals, our departmental goals, because we want that alignment in place. And it's a really good committee to have that discussion, so we can bring that back as a recommendation to the full board. Full board, excuse me.
Anyone, I mean, do you have a, would someone like to serve on the Board of Education Goals? I'll be glad to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm happy to do it too, but someone else, I've done it before, so if someone else wants to do it, I'm not.
And could we give the opportunity, I mean, have you broached this with Eric and Jeff to see? I have a feeling they would be very interested in participating in that, because this would be the first time you, as relatively new board members, would be able to be in those discussions, correct?
Right. That's correct.
We held these a little later last year, so I think we had some involvement. But again, now, just that year, especially with three new board members, makes a big difference when you've just had that experience. So, and I know Eric had said he would love to be on either one, or neither, if there's other volunteers. So, it's really open. You know, obviously, with a committee, we would have no more than three people or three board members on each of the committees, so.
You know, and I think there's value in having seasoned members and new members involved on each of the committees. I did serve on the superintendent goal one last time, so I'm happy to serve on either or both as well.
All right.
Pretty easy group.
Okay.
Great word selection, when you said seasoned, too. I need to learn that, so thank you.
So, and do you?
Put Eric as well, and we can reach out to Director Orvis as well.
Okay. That sounds good.
And I'm happy to, if you need it, but I'd like to thund out the opportunity.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Outstanding. Thank you.
Superintendent, you have those?
I do, actually. I have superintendent goals as well, so.
Okay. All right.
Good. Thank you.
Moving on to item M, the approval of the board policies, second of two readings.
And I didn't put the plaque back up on this, but this is the continuation of the second reading of our board policies. So, this includes the 600 series. By Iowa code, every five years, we have a requirement to review our board policies. Within that cycle, this is the year that our 600 and 700 series are reviewed. We also have four other policies that we went through last meeting to talk about, 402.2, 402.3, 602.2.1.1, and then 904.1. So, those are recommended for the final reading, the second of two readings, so those become official as far as board policy.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the policies?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the second and final reading of board policy series 600, 700, and board policies 402.2, vacation and holidays 402.3, leaves of absence 602.21.1, concurrent enrollment textbook, and 904.1, building and site naming rights as presented. Upon approval, policies will be in effect as of July 1, 2018.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Susie. Any questions or comments? If I remember right, we didn't make any changes?
We did not. There is a couple of questions. One question was about physical education, and our policy is aligned with the rules, regulations from Iowa code, and that's Iowa code 28112.5F. And that kind of talks about what is required and what you can exempt for PE, and our code aligns with that. One of the aspects, it was a really good question, it allows us to really focus in on caps, because caps is one of the allowable exemptions when you're going offsite. So, if you're involved with caps, that allows for an exemption. So, we made that, it wasn't a policy change, but it's allowed in our administrative regulations to allow caps as that exemption. So, we're really excited about that, and certainly that aligns with the Iowa code and our policy, so.
Thank you for taking that.
Oh, yes. It's always fun reading Iowa code.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, couple of different items. Number one, the all-school welcome will be Monday morning. Certainly, all board members are invited to come. Like it or not, we do have your picture up on the board, on the screen, for everybody at that all-school welcome. So, just to highlight, again, the gift that you give the district as far as leadership and time, and certainly what you do for our students is greatly appreciated, and certainly something that we always highlight at that all-school welcome. August 27 is our next board meeting, and it's listed still as necessary. But again, we believe that's going to be necessary at this time. I'll move into September 20. That is, and again, we didn't list what that was, but that is going to be the ribbon cutting for Aldrich Elementary. Very excited about that. We wanted to make sure that we had all of our staff moved in, the furniture moved in, allows us some time to make sure everything's running smoothly. We're going to certainly have invitations out to our community and do a ribbon cutting and some few words of thought about just the meaning of Aldrich Elementary, and certainly what this means for our community and our students. And thank you to our community for approving the bond for that building. Finally, the facility discussion, I just wanted to go through and go over a few of the pictures of Aldrich, because this is really a unique time, an exciting time, when we look at a seventh elementary opening in Cedar Falls due to our enrollment growth. And as a side note, I think we've had 35 new students that have come into our district in the last three days. So, really, really exciting to see that, and certainly, this epitomizes the growth that we're seeing. So, if you're picturing the building, basically, you're looking from the west side, looking east into the courtyard area. Very excited that, again, we have a lot of natural light coming into the building. You can see the red extensions there. Those are the professional learning community, staff areas that they will be able to collaboratively meet and be together throughout the day. And again, we'll go through these pretty quickly. This just pulls back from that same view. The road is right in front. The landscaping is going in with some trees, and some of the grass has been planted. There's been some sod that's been laid, especially in areas where students will be walking. Playgrounds have been installed. This is the first through sixth grade playground on the south side of the building, which is extremely exciting, gymnasium in the back. This is the entrance from the south side going into the building, which will be our staff parking and our parrot drop off, excuse me, our bus drop off on the south side. That was almost a very big error, so.
There will be big signs.
There will be big signs on the south side of the building. Then on the right side, you can see where the cafeteria and gymnasium are. This is our pre-KK playground on the north side of the building. It's fenced in by code, and those students have direct access out to this playground. It's smaller in scope. Main office, again, there's different colors that signify different areas and locations. The main office kind of has that blue theme, and you can see the CF logo or the CF behind where the administrative assistants will be at. This is one of our areas where our teachers will gather. You can see there's still some construction aspects that are in this picture, but certainly things are coming together. We're having furniture delivered and installed in our classrooms. As you'll see in the next picture, we have our media center tables and our media center shelving for all of our books being installed, and certainly trying to incorporate a lot of brighter colors and earth tone colors into these rooms. Here is one of our classrooms, which is, I believe, a student with special needs room. One of our, kind of our collab collaborative spaces, our multi-learning spaces off of our pods, and you can see comfortable seating. You can see, there's little kind of black rectangles in the back of the chairs. That's meant you can easily lift those up, and they're on, the front are on caster's wheels, so you can move those around to be able to group differently with different students, with different screens and technology. Here's our cafeteria with our cafeteria tables set up and delivered. Gymnasium is certainly ready, and excited by having that completed. Another one of our collab spaces, each of the seating arrangements are different in the collab spaces, depending on the age of the students and the grade levels that are there. You can see this one has kind of a softer seating. There's high-back chairs with a little, kind of a higher desk area where students with their Chromebooks can sit, they can face the teaching wall, or they can work collaboratively together. Because again, our whole focus is on helping students collaborate, work on those four Cs, as we've talked about so much at the board table. Some of our staff members, some of their family members, helping to set up, getting very busy and actively involved. And certainly, we have had so many volunteers and people help out in the building, it's unbelievable what's occurring out there. Again, a few more pictures of some of the collab spaces feeding into the classrooms. Again, you can see the different color themes, as well as just some of the different furniture that's there. It's all about having those inviting spaces that kids will come, participate, collaborate, work together on, find those comfortable spots for working together, working individually, and doing the learning that we know is so vitally important. And Janelle says that's it, so that is the last picture. It's just very exciting. Janelle's going to reach out to all board members to find out if you would like to go on a tour in the next week or so before we do some of the opening up with the school and staff, but certainly want to extend those invitations. And very important, I think, not only for you to see it, but then as we have our ribbon cutting ceremony for our community to see how proud we are of the building, but also how thankful we are that they approve that.
Quick question. For walkers, do we have, are there, where are the sidewalks installed? Do we have sidewalks installed?
We do, yes. In fact, there are lots of sidewalks. And as the site continues to expand as far as residential, there'll be much more access coming. So, when you go out there, you'll see, and sidewalks are really well delineated. In fact, there's a fairly, is it a 10-foot wide bike path? That's one of the requirements that feeds down into the southern residential neighborhood. But you'll also see crosswalks that go to the west where there's no housing units yet, but they will be in the future. So, we've thought about that with a mindful approach to make sure that it's expandable and safe into the future.
And bike racks? Do we have bike racks?
That's a great question. I'm assuming, yes, we have bike racks, but I just don't know if they're there yet.
They're not out there yet, but we should be having them.
Yes. It's one of those aspects where, as we go through this process, there's so many finite, minute details that they're not there yet, but they will be.
Excellent. Good questions. Any questions regarding Andy's superintendent's report? All right. Do I have any questions or comments or concerns from board members? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Jenny Leeper and seconded by Jeff Hasman. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.